It is six o'clock and I call the October first twenty twenty four regular meeting in Franklin County Planning Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss meeting format.
Tonight's meeting will be held, will be conducted through a hybrid in-person online meeting platform. Should an individual planning commissioner become unexpectedly disconnected, please rejoin the meeting at your first opportunity. The record will reflect your attendance. The meeting will be paused for up to ten minutes to address technical difficulties. If they cannot be resolved within ten minutes, then the meeting will proceed so long as a quorum of planning commissioners are present. Please mute phone when not speaking. If you wish to comment or need clarification on a public hearing item, please send us an email at planninginquiry@franklincountywa, all one word, dot gov. Before the public comment period closes, once public comment period has closed on said item, comments will not be included as part of the discussion. To those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone when addressing staff or public comments slash testimonies.
Will planning staff please call roll and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Kraus?
Here.
Mike Vincent? Remy Dru?
Here.
Melinda Didier?
Mark Druder?
Here.
Manny Gutierrez? Stacy Neiften?
Here.
Mr. Chair, would you have a quorum?
Thank you. Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
Uh, my name's Aaron Gunderson, I'm a planner two.
Ryan Nelson, planner one.
Okay, I will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Dru. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
Here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid hearing. In-person public testimony will be divided into groups for and against last neutral. They will be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, given their name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Webex public testimony will be called upon individually during the Webex public testimony portion of the hearing. Given their na- giving their name for the audio record as well as if they're in favor, neutral, or against the proposal. Please mute audio when not speaking. Emailed comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the Webex public testimony section of the hearing. All comments and questions should be addressed to the planning commission and should be relevant to the application and not of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are parts of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such dis- distract- distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning to a moment, turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on the subject matter of these hearings except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a discussion in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for hearing today. Whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interests in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have a business associates or immediate family who may either be benefited or harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Is there in, there is no audience, is there anyone online or on the phone?
No.
No. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a report. The commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representative's presentation. In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Webex public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project to be read into the record by staff. Final staff comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Seeing none, item one. Item one is a public hearing for file CUP twenty twenty four dash thirteen, SEPA twenty twenty four dash twenty. Is a proposal to allow for deviations to the accessory structure standards in the suburban twenty RS twenty zoning district. The request is to exceed the roof height limit of eighteen feet from the midpoint of the roof. I declare the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty four dash thirteen, SEPA twenty twenty four dash twenty to be open at six oh seven. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Yeah, um. Are you ready, Ryan? Okay, all right, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, so, uh, the presentation is, uh, conditional use permit, as explained, uh, deviation of roof height limit. So the address is, of the proposed area is at seventy thirty-five West Wernet Road. Uh, zoning for the property is suburban twenty RS twenty and has a comprehensive plan land use designation of low density residential. Um, and the property size of where the accessory structure is at is approximately one acre in size. Um, so, uh, let's see, so, um, like I said in the description, um, the conditional per- use permit is to allow construction and use of a proposed accessory building that would exceed the maximum allowed building height for accessory structures suburban twenty zoning district. Applicant is proposed to build accessory structures twenty-five feet in height according to the application. The Frank County Code seventeen point two eight point oh five oh F two. Uh, limits the accessory wa- building roof height to eighteen feet from the midpoint of the roof. Um, though it does allow for the provision of exceeding it upon approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, and then, uh, the site plan that was submitted, um, includes like the access to the property, uh, the location of the single-family dwelling that's currently under construction. Um, location of proposed accessory building, uh, you know, existing septic system, uh, the main well and, um, you know, the water supply line between the fa- uh, single-family dwelling and the proposed accessory structure. Um, this is kind of the location of where, um, you know, the proposed prop- or the property is for the proposed accessory structure. Um, these are kind of the, kind of what the site currently looks like, or at least as of, you know, a few weeks ago. So on or about October twenty ninth twenty twenty four, staff sent notice to technical agencies, property owners within five hundred feet and put a legal notice into the Franklin County graphic. Um, staff also pu- you know, posted the pending land use action sign on September twelfth twenty twenty four. Um, made, uh, ew, that needed to be fixed, uh, that's supposed to be, um, uh, so staff, um, reviewed checklist and issued, well, we issued an optional determination non-significance. Um, not a DNS, apologize for that. Um, so as explained again, um, you know, it's, the main request is just to exceed the maximum building height for accessory structures in this urban twenty zoning district. Um, he's proposing to build a twenty-five foot roof height. Um, so, just go, screen that. Um, so we received some comments, uh, one for Public Works, um, basically requesting that they do an approach, apply for an approach permit, uh, at the time of when they file for a building permit. Um, and then obviously if there's any utility extensions crossing Frank County roads, just time vacation. Um, and so, there's just kind of basic comments regarding that. Uh, you know, we provided comments for planned building, uh, basically stating that the building permits will be required. Um, you know, and essentially reiterating parts of the code that, you know, they still have to meet. You know, they're not exceeding those other standards, so, um, you know, I believe the structure is over sixteen hundred eight, one thousand six hundred eighty three feet. So, you know, the type and color of both the roof and siding material have to match the primary house. Um, and a, and the fact that they're only waiving, uh, the roof height. So, recommended. So, uh, essentially, you know, recommend, uh, ugh, sorry, I might kind of, okay. So, uh, essentially we had standard recommended findings of fact. Uh, proposed use of an RS twenty zoning district in accordance with the goals and policies of the county development regulations and the applicable comprehensive plan. The proposed will not adversely affect public infrastructure. A proposed will be instructed maintain, operate to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Uh, location and height of the structure and site design will not discourage development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. Uh, operation, uh, in connection with the proposal will not be more objectionable nearby properties by, you know, reason of noise, fumes, dust, traffic, flashing lights, that kind of thing. And proposed will not endanger public health, safety, general welfare if located or proposed. Um, so, uh, when it comes to conditions approval, just in, in addition to the standard CUP language, the applicant shall, shall comply with requirements provided by Public Works and our department. And, uh, that's kind of the suggested motion.
Okay, does any commissioner have any questions of staff? There is no applicant. There is no in-public testimony, there's no call-in testimony, there's no email testimony. Does staff have any final comments?
Um, the only comment I have is, and I thought that was in the analysis, I must have skimmed past that.
Aaron?
Or do we not have analysis?
I do have one comment is that you misspoke when you s- on the, um, it is on the noticing, you said October twenty ninth and not August twenty ninth.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so it was August twenty ninth. Um, and I believe, and I was trying to see if it was in the staff report, but, um, you know, the reason the applicant suggests is moving, you know, wanting to exceed the roof height has to do with the storage of RV essentially, so.
Okay.
I just realized my way to take, um, I wasn't in the staff report there, so, um, yeah, that's, that's it.
All right, the public testimony portion of the public hearing for CUP twenty twenty four dash thirteen, SEPA twenty twenty four dash twenty is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I, I move that the Franklin County Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and adopt the six suggested findings of fact and eleven suggestion conditions of approval as detailed in the staff report, report and approved case files, CUP twenty twenty four dash thirteen dash SEPA twenty twenty four dash twenty. Second.
This has been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Druder. We forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP twenty twenty four dash thirteen, SEPA twenty twenty four dash twenty with six adopted findings of fact and eleven conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote?
Remy Dru? Stacy Neiften?
Yes.
Mark Druder?
Yes.
Mike Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
So, um.
Preview of items?
Yeah, uh, so next meeting is going to be probably a pretty lengthy meeting. Um, you know, we got.
What's the date?
Uh, the date's going to be November twelfth, I want to say, yeah, okay. So, cause so far we got, um, conditional use permit, uh, for dairy expansion. Um, we got, um, you know, another Title seventeen public hearing. Um, and then we also got, um, hopefully, well, it'll be ready to bring forth, is the ordinance for the PUD. Um, so, that's kind of, kind of a pretty, pretty big meeting of items, so hopefully that's, fingers crossed, uh, because we got, got a whole host of things going on, so, um.
Yeah, the meeting is on November twelfth because the first Tuesday is election day and then the second Tuesday is Veterans Day.
Well, no, no, because it's on, Veterans Day is on Monday, it's the eleventh, yeah.
I was thinking twenty twenty five.
Yeah, you're, you're off.
What day are we usually, we're the first Tuesday or the second?
We're always the first Tuesday of the month, um.
That's what I was getting mixed up on.
Yeah.
It was never that way before you came.
Okay, so it's the twelfth?
Yes, it is the twelfth, so, yeah, just, yeah, mark that calendars, get it all squared away because, yeah, we'll definitely need people here, so.
And is there anything to update us about what has gone before the commissioners?
Yeah, so I believe Derek was able to get everything that was in the backlog outside of the rezon that we did last. the rezone that we did last in September, so, or that zone change or whatever. Um, that's the only item in the backlog, along with this now, but it has to go to the board, so. Um, so we're, we're doing good on that end, you know, he's able to catch up with that. Um, trying to remember if he got the, well, actually that doesn't even contain with you guys. Um, it just had to do with, um, doing the official update to the twenty twenty one, uh, building and energy code standards, but, um, but yeah, as far as the other items, those have all been pretty much caught up, gone through the board. Um, so, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, good enough. Planning commission meeting is adjourned at six nineteen. That could be a record.